We'll go ahead and call tonight's regular city council meeting to order. And for tonight's invocation, we have Pastor Steve Switzer of the Calvary Baptist Church. Pastor?
Let's pray. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you tonight and we thank you for even the privilege of calling you by name and allowing us into your presence, Father. Thank you for that. And, Father, as we stand in this room, Lord, I'm always reminded of the fact that you say in your word that you put the leaders in place, and I thank you for the leaders you've put in place in this town, in this community. I just pray that you give them wisdom tonight, the decisions that they have to make, Father. I pray that they would be able to know you in a personal way, and, Father, that things of you would flavor this room to see. Lord, I thank you for these firefighters represented here tonight, Father. I thank you for those, all of our public servants. And I thank you for the work that they do, and I pray that you bless their lives, and thank you for how they protect us, Father. And I just thank you for the work that these public servants in this room do, Father. So, we just stand before you thankful for all that you've done, and the people that you've put in our lives. And, Lord, again, we ask for your blessings upon this meeting and your wisdom to guide it in a very special way. It's in your name that we pray. Amen.
May he. Thank you. Will you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Larry Bud.
Here.
Shawn Burtle.
Here.
Arnie Dorchinez.
Here.
Rob Heatherling.
Here.
Bruce Jones.
Here.
Ray Coons.
Here.
Martin Voda.
Here.
Earl Walters.
Here.
All aldermen present. First thing we have is a motion to utilize the omnibus vote for approval of the minutes of the meetings listed on tonight's agenda under the title Omnibus Vote Designation. Alderman Dorchinez, second by Alderman Jones, discussion or comment? Hearing and roll call.
Shawn Burtle.
Yes.
Arnie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Okay, those minutes will be the minutes of the regular meeting held October 7th, 2013, minutes of the Lake Airport Committee meeting held October 10th, 2013, minutes of the Water Environmental Committee meeting held October 10th, 2013, minutes of the Ordinance Committee meeting held October 16th, 2013, and minutes of the Finance Committee meeting held October 16th, 2013. I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Alderman Burtle. You have a second. Second by Alderman Walters, discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
Arnie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Shawn Burtle.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Okay, next we have a proclamation for the Illinois Federation of Businesswomen. Amy, would you stand up, please? I will attempt to read this. The gray beard, I hope doesn't indicate the eyes are going as well, but it's possible. Okay, whereas the Illinois Federation of Businesswomen's Clubs Incorporated was chartered with the Illinois Secretary of State in December of 1919 and continues today as the premier organization of women helping women, and whereas the Illinois Federation of Businesswomen's Clubs Incorporated's primary mission is to advocate professional and personal growth, leadership development, and participation, equity, and economic self-sufficiency for working women through education, legislation, and networking, and whereas the Illinois Federation of Women's Clubs has been instrumental in the passage of the Illinois Fair Pay Act, the legislation to prevent drive-through mastectomy surgery, legislation that provides for a longer stay in the hospital for new mothers, and numerous legislative acts furthering the well-being of women and their families, whereas the Illinois Federation of Businesswomen's Clubs continue to be involved in the passage of the Illinois bill to put equal rights for women into the U.S. Constitution, and whereas the Illinois Federation of Businesswomen's Clubs has over 400 members located throughout the state of Illinois that provide leadership and service to their communities, and whereas the membership of the Taylorville local organization provide ongoing service to their community, and whereas we are proud of their leadership and their service to their community, now therefore be it resolved that I, Greg Brotherton, Mayor of the City of Taylorville, Christian County, do hereby proclaim October 21st through the 25th, 2013, as Illinois Women in Business Week in the City of Taylorville, and that all citizens of the City of Taylorville are encouraged to join in this salute to working women by celebrating the achievements of women in business as they contribute to our economic, civic, and cultural purposes, and that a copy of this resolution be given to the President of the local organization of the IFBW commemorating the efforts of their members on behalf of all working women. Amy. Okay, let's get the front row. We don't want the aldermen in the picture. Okay, let's go down to a couple of resolutions we have. Well, when we're ready, I'm waiting for a signal. Okay, first resolution is the real estate lease with Clint Barlow.
Go ahead and make that motion, accept that, Your Honor.
Second by Alderman Jones, discussion or comment? Hearing and roll call, please.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Shawn Burtle.
Yes.
Arnie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Okay, next we have a resolution, this being the standard agreement for consultant services at Illinois airports for architectural, engineering, planning, and special services for the rehabilitation, rehabilitate north portion of aircraft parking apron project.
Your Honor, go ahead and have that held until we read the minutes, the motions of the minutes remaining.
Okay. Hold. Okay, now we have ordinance amending portions of Section 1-6-6 of the City Code regarding rules of order.
I'd like to make that motion, Your Honor.
Alderman Jones, second by Alderman Heatherling, discussion or comment?
Comment, Your Honor.
Go ahead and comment.
I found this kind of embarrassing to all of us sitting up here that we have to have an ordinance that states how we handle our committee meetings, this, to be told that we have to open the floor and be told that if the chairman does not wish to open the floor, that you can make a motion and has to be recognized. We're basically telling the public that they have no say at a committee meeting, and that's where we continue to say, that's where the public comes to the committees, to make their voices heard. I will never use this type of directive at a committee meeting that I'm taking and chairman of. My belief is, if you come to a committee meeting, that you are able to express your opinion. The committee chairman is to maintain order at that meeting, but at the same time, we continue to state, people have the right to their opinions, to give the discussion, a little bit of input, and I will not be supporting this because I don't feel we need this.
Okay.
If I might.
Alderman Heatherling.
Well, I think this is a move in the right direction because it clarifies some points that's been out there before that were possibly abused because we didn't have the clarifications. If you read in particular under E.2, it says at a committee meeting, when members of the public are present, the chairman in his discretion may open the floor to the public or to any particular persons for discussion, or alternatively, a motion can be made and seconded by committee members to allow the public present or such persons to address the committee during the discussion of a pending subject matter, agenda, item, if such motion is made. And here's where the clarification comes in, and this is the good part of this amendment. If such a motion is made, the chairman shall recognize such motion and call for a second to such motion, and if made, such motion shall be voted upon, and if approved by a majority vote of committee members present, the committee chairman is obligated to comply with such motion. This guarantees us free access to voice our opinions and to seek the public's opinion. Thank you.
Any other comments? Alderman Burtle.
You know, I agree with all of everyone here. You know, if a committee chairman could stymie conversation for any reason out there, what it's about, that's not good. And the conversation, especially at committee level, should be open to all of the public and to all aldermen too. So, I think this is not really something we need in us, there's kind of a reminder that that's where the conversation should take place, and everybody should get the opportunity to take place in the conversation.
All sounds good. All right. Roll call, please.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
No.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Shawn Burtle.
Yes.
Arnie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Motion passes seven to one. Next, we have an ordinance regarding the sale of items of personal property owned by the City of Taylorville, this being the radios. Alderman Burtle, second by Alderman Walters, discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Shawn Burtle.
Yes.
Arnie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to one. Next, we have an ordinance regarding the sale of items of personal property owned by the City of Taylorville, this being the radios. Alderman Burtle, second by Alderman Walters, discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Okay, next we have several ordinances. We'll start off with the first one here, this regarding annexations. First ordinance is annexing certain territory to the City of Taylorville, this being the Mid-America Sport Parachute property located at 1501 South Sprecher. Entertained a motion?
That motion.
Alderman Dorchinez, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Burtle, discussion or comment?
Discussion.
Alderman Burtle.
We've had this to the table many times, respect with Alderman Dorch's doing. However, I continue to not support the move to annex at this time. It's been discussed many times, what we're going to be paying for a water treating facility at this time. Any money that is being picked up on double water rate is going directly into the water fund. To pursue annexation, we are basically taking any monies that would be the double water rate, putting those into other funds that can be spent on any other issues, or potentially spent on other issues and needs. I would like to keep these annexations at a hold at this time, just to maintain a continual income to the water fund and to build on that until we know what we're going to do with our water treating facility. Some of the other issues that have come to the table are related to the businesses that are being considered for annexation. I don't know if anybody's ever done any discussion with these companies to find out how this is going to affect their bottom lines. Is this a potentially something that we're going to be using to ask these businesses to leave the community? Is it something we can potentially be doing to the business to say we're going to downsize the business and have fewer employees? We start looking at the, what they call the Obamacare, the Affordable Care Act, how's this going to affect the businesses? I think we've got a lot of stuff on the table, gentlemen, that we really need to consider before we do these annexations. Just because we can is not the reason to do it. At this point, I don't know why this is all of a sudden a hot item. I understand, we all agreed to it, and I'm as guilty as the rest of us, we did vote for this, and I supported it. However, a lot of changes have been made since that initial vote for that directive, and I'm just curious if Mr. Dorchinez would entertain the question, you know, I think you said you were on the city council for 16 years, I believe is what you stated on one audio cut I'd heard. Why all of a sudden now are we pursuing these as opposed to somewhere earlier in your terms in office?
Well, these are all Lucian's, they're within the city, they should have been annexed. Fifty years ago, however long ago, some of these properties came into existence with buildings, et cetera. One of the things is that some of these are generate sales tax for the City of Taylorville, and the bottom line is, even though you're losing half the water rate that is normally paid by those businesses, that's more than made up by the increase in the taxes. As far as it affecting the water rate, there's no question, the arithmetic is there, but it would be miniscule compared to what we're going to be generating for the general fund. I talked to Treasurer France before she retired, and she approved this, she encouraged this, and like you said, you're saying this all of a sudden. I mean, coming to tonight's, not all of a sudden. This has taken several months. We've got a lot of expense in getting to this point. If this was going to be voted down, it should have been voted down a long time ago, because this was, we've gone and proceeded with this with the understanding that this is going to occur. It would be, in my estimation, be foolish to spend all this money and all this time after this council said, "Go ahead," and we've picked on, and I'm not the only one that can pick out properties to be annexed, anybody can. I think it'd be very foolish to vote this down tonight.
Okay, and if I may, and I respect your comments, but going forward, as we look at annexations, keep in mind what the costs are associated with any of these properties we bring into the city. Specifically in Ward 2, we have got, and this is from this year's expenses, what we did for roadwork for a road, Breckenridge Road to 104, we spent $10,367.60. Breckenridge Road to 29, Route 29, we spent $1,573.00 for oil and ship. The Langleyville Road, which we brought in last year, we spent $17,152.80 just to oil and ship these roads. My question is, as we move forward with annexations, we need to know, gentlemen, that we're going to be picking up the dollars and cents that we need to maintain these roads, the properties, provide services. I've got some real heartburn because right now, we don't have these monies coming in. The motor fuel tax is lower again, if you read Three Year Municipal Magazine, we're down 2.2% expected for 2014. We were down from last year to this year. We are not getting the funding coming in from motor fuel tax to help support maintenance of the streets in this community. Thank you, Your Honor.
Alderman Dorchinez.
Well, you know this, I don't have to tell you this, that these people are using those roads, and they're not paying their fair share, as far as I'm concerned. By coming into the city, they will be still using those roads, but they'll be paying their fair share.
Alderman Heatherling.
Have any of these businesses been contacted, and has anyone received any reply from the businesses, as far as what the impact of these annexations would be on them?
I mean, obviously, they're all made aware of it, and so if they've got concerns, they would have the opportunity to come and tell us what their concerns are, as far as I know, they have not.
At this point, none of these businesses have voiced any objections.
Not, at least not to me, and as far as I know, the city clerk has not heard anything from them.
Just one time, just why, was all.
Alderman Coons.
Thank you, Your Honor. I agree with Alderman Voda's comments, I just want to add on to a few more of my own. Besides the street sewers that we'll have to maintain and the roadwork itself too, I've talked to some superintendents and stuff currently, and some of our former superintendents, just with the fire department alone. They, the fire district generates money by the territory that's under their control, and as the former chief has pointed out, as the more annexations we take in, that's less money the fire district has to give to the fire department for equipment, you know, or whatever else. The majority of our engines, our equipment, everything, come from the fire district. So, if we take away the dollars because we're annexing, continuing to annex left and right, that's less money they can give to these guys, and as the former chief pointed out, I highly doubt that this council's going to vote for big expenditures on fire trucks and everything else when the time comes. We're basically robbing Peter to pay Paul. As well as the police department, we keep annexing and annexing in, the police chief has told me time and time again, he doesn't have enough people to cover what we have right now to do a proper job, but yet we're wanting to bring more streets and more businesses and more of this and more of that in, that's just putting more pressure and more work on those guys as well. This is not my words, this is from the people that have to deal with this every day. Also, there's one annexation on here that I did get a phone call about. The owner of the property, their son called me and stated that the owner is an older lady who is on a fixed income, and if we annex them in, that's going to be more taxes that she's going to have to pay out and everything else, and she can't afford it. The property is where it's at, under normal circumstances, I would agree, shouldn't come into the city. But just because, you know, we have to weigh all these factors, how is it going to affect the citizens? How is it going to affect the police department, the fire department? Not just, "Well, yeah, they should have been in 50 years ago," which might be correct, I'm not disagreeing in that, but there's more factors that are in play that we need to look at, how it affects people, rather than just, "Oh, yeah, they should have been in." You know, so when you make your decision, gentlemen, I hope you weigh all the factors, not just one or two of them. And I do support annexation in general. I think Alderman Dorchinez did an excellent job getting the flow chart together and pursuing a lot of these. I think he should be commended about that. In the future, I might vote for some annexations, but I agree with Alderman Voda right now that we need to put a hold on it. Maybe review some of these at the committee level and say, "Hey, do we really need to do this right now, or can this wait?" You know, and take a harder look at some of these instead of just flying them through, you know? And so I would be voting no right now on these, all these annexations respectively. Thank you.
Alderman Burtle.
Not that I don't agree with Mr. Voda and Mr. Coons, but the, if you read these particular annexations, they are all properties that I would consider already in town. So, we're already taking care of the streets. Mr. Voda brought up the fact that they spent some additional dollars in his Ward 2-D streets that have been annexed in, but that's, those are isolated cases in most cases. This whole list tonight, these are places that we're already sending to the fire department to, we're already sending to the police department to, we're already working on the streets, we're already working on the sewers, we're already doing just about everything we can do as a city to take care of these properties. And I think that if we were stretching the boundaries here and reaching the way out to try to annex somebody in, I might be opposed to those myself, but things that are basically inside the corporate city limits, I think, are something that we need to clean up, and I think it's been a long time coming, actually. I think that the point that Alderman Dorchinez made, that some of these need to be brought in 50 years ago, that might be a stretch year-wise, but it's a good point.
Thank you. Alderman, vote.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to be clear, I'm not going to vote against this because I don't feel that we should be annexing. We should be annexing where it's needed. My concern right now is making sure we have the funding available that we're going to need to pursue this water treating facility. Again, Mr. Dorchinez has done a good job going out and identifying these properties that we need to be looking at and bringing into the community, but at this time, we are picking up a double water rate which is going directly into the water fund. Correct me if I'm wrong, Alderman Dorchinez, but I believe that's where 100% of that funding is going on these water rates. At this time, we are looking at how we're going to fund this water treating facility, and the more money we have available to put down as we move forward with this project, the less likely we're going to have to do an exorbitant increase in water rates, and that is my concern right now, is to put this on hold until we know where we're headed with our water treating facility. Thank you.
Alderman Jones.
Well, I think Alderman Voda's questions could have been answered by Mr. Dorchinez with a phone call rather than at the city council meeting. I also think that if you, gentlemen, read some of these, some of these annexations are needed to get part of Sprecher Street that goes all the way out to Route 48, which we've already taken jurisdictional transfer of, and it's been repaved and everything like that, and we don't own part of it. So, some of these annexations are needed already. As far as the rest of the comments, Alderman Dorchinez said that these were ones that have already been looked at, pursued, and told to go ahead of, so if you're voting against something that you've already voted for without doing your homework, then I really think that you should go ahead and vote these through. Now, from here on out, these have already been okayed, that these properties were going to be annexed. We need to go ahead, we've already spent the money for the legal work and the engineering, and those are in tonight's bills, and as I was looking at the bills, the first one I saw was Green and Bradford's for all of this engineering. So, I think that we should go ahead and do this, and then take Alderman Voda's comments into consideration with any further annexations. Like I said, these are all properties that are already being served by the City of Taylorville, so that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Let's go for a roll call.
Martin Voda.
No.
Earl Walters.
You're taking these one at a time, Your Honor?
Yes.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Shawn Burtle.
Yes.
Arnie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Okay, next we have several ordinances. We'll start off with the first one here, this regarding annexations. First ordinance is annexing certain territory to the City of Taylorville, this being the Mid-America Sport Parachute property located at 1501 South Sprecher. Entertained a motion?
That motion.
Alderman Dorchinez, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Burtle, discussion or comment?
Discussion. Alderman Burtle. We've had this to the table many times, respect with Alderman Dorch's is doing. However, I continue to not support the move to annex at this time. It's been discussed many times, what we're going to be paying for a water treating facility at this time. Any money that is being picked up on double water rate is going directly into the water fund. To pursue annexation, we are basically taking any monies that would be the double water rate, putting those into other funds that can be spent on any other issues, or potentially spent on other issues and needs. I would like to keep these annexations at a hold at this time, just to maintain a continual income to the water fund and to build on that until we know what we're going to do with our water treating facility. Some of the other issues that have come to the table are related to the businesses that are being considered for annexation. I don't know if anybody's ever done any discussion with these companies to find out how this is going to affect their bottom lines. Is this a potentially something that we're going to be using to ask these businesses to leave the community? Is it something we can potentially be doing to the business to say we're going to downsize the business and have fewer employees? We start looking at the, what they call the Obamacare, the Affordable Care Act, how's this going to affect the businesses? I think we've got a lot of stuff on the table, gentlemen, that we really need to consider before we do these annexations. Just because we can is not the reason to do it. At this point, I don't know why this is all of a sudden a hot item. I understand, we all agreed to it, and I'm as guilty as the rest of us, we did vote for this, and I supported it. However, a lot of changes have been made since that initial vote for that directive, and I'm just curious if Mr. Dorchinez would entertain the question, you know, I think you said you were on the city council for 16 years, I believe is what you stated on one audio cut I'd heard. Why all of a sudden now are we pursuing these as opposed to somewhere earlier in your terms in office?
Well, these are all Lucian's, they're within the city, they should have been annexed. Fifty years ago, however long ago, some of these properties came into existence with buildings, et cetera. One of the things is that some of these are generate sales tax for the City of Taylorville, and the bottom line is, even though you're losing half the water rate that is normally paid by those businesses, that's more than made up by the increase in the taxes. As far as it affecting the water rate, there's no question, the arithmetic is there, but it would be miniscule compared to what we're going to be generating for the general fund. I talked to Treasurer France before she retired, and she approved this, she encouraged this, and like you said, you're saying this all of a sudden. I mean, coming to tonight's, not all of a sudden. This has taken several months. We've got a lot of expense in getting to this point. If this was going to be voted down, it should have been voted down a long time ago, because this was, we've gone and proceeded with this with the understanding that this is going to occur. It would be, in my estimation, be foolish to spend all this money and all this time after this council said, "Go ahead," and we've picked on, and I'm not the only one that can pick out properties to be annexed, anybody can. I think it'd be very foolish to vote this down tonight.
Okay, and if I may, and I respect your comments, but going forward, as we look at annexations, keep in mind what the costs are associated with any of these properties we bring into the city. Specifically in Ward 2, we have got, and this is from this year's expenses, what we did for roadwork for a road, Breckenridge Road to 104, we spent $10,367.60. Breckenridge Road to 29, Route 29, we spent $1,573.00 for oil and ship.[678.73]
Police Department. We keep annexing and annexing in. The police chief has told me time and time again, he doesn't have enough people to cover what we have right now to do a proper job. But yet we're wanting to bring more streets and more businesses and more of this and more of that in. That's just putting more pressure and more work on those guys as well. This is not my words. This is from the people that have to deal with this every day. Also, there's one annexation on here that I did get a phone call about. The owner of the property, their son called me and stated that the owner is an older lady who is on a fixed income. And if we annex them in, that's going to be more taxes that she's going to have to pay out and everything else, and she can't afford it. The property is where it's at, under normal circumstances, I would agree, it shouldn't come into the city. But just because, you know, we have to weigh all these factors. How is it going to affect the citizens? How is it going to affect the police department, the fire department? Not just, "Well, yeah, they should have been in fifty years ago," which might be correct. I'm not disagreeing in that. But there's more factors that are in play that we need to look at, how it affects people, rather than just, "Oh, yeah, they should have been in." You know, so when you make your decision, gentlemen, I hope you weigh all the factors, not just one or two of them. And I do support annexation in general. I think Alderman Dorchen has done an excellent job getting the flow chart together and pursuing a lot of these. I think he should be committed about that. In the future, I might vote for some annexations, but I agree with Alderman voter right now that we need to put a hold on it. Maybe review some of these at the committee level and say, "Hey, do we really need to do this right now, or can this wait?" You know, and take a harder look at some of these instead of just flying them through, you know? And so I will be voting no right now on all these annexations respectively. Thank you.
Alderman Bertle.
Not that I don't agree with Mr. Voda and Mr. Pence, but if you read these particular annexations, they are all properties that I would consider already in town. So we're already taking care of the streets. Mr. Voda brought up the fact that they spent some additional dollars in his ward to do streets that have been annexed in. Those are isolated cases in most cases. This whole list tonight, these are places that we're already sending to the fire department to, we're already sending to the police department to, we're already working on the streets, we're already working on the suburbs, we're already doing just about everything we can do as a city to take care of these properties. And I think that if we were stretching the boundaries here and reaching a way out to try to annex somebody in, I might be opposed to those myself. But things that are basically inside the corporate city limits, I think, are something that we need to clean up. And I think it's been a long time coming, actually. I think that the point that Alderman Dorchen has made, that some of these need to be brought in fifty years ago, that might be a stretch year-wise, but it's a good point.
Thank you. Alderman, vote.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to be clear, I'm not going to vote against this because I don't feel that we should be annexing. We should be annexing where it's needed. My concern right now is making sure we have the funding available that we're going to need to pursue this water treatment facility. Again, Mr. Dorchen has done a good job going out and identifying these properties that we need to be looking at and bringing into the community. But at this time, we are picking up a double water rate which is going directly into the water fund. Correct me if I'm wrong, Alderman Dorchen, but I believe that's where 100% of that funding is going on these water rates. At this time, we are looking at how we're going to fund this water treatment facility. And the more money we have available to put down as we move forward with this project, the less likely we're going to have to do an exorbitant increase in water rates. And that is my concern right now, is to put this on hold until we know where we're headed with our water treatment facility. Thank you.
Alderman Jones.
Well, I think Alderman Voda's questions could have been answered by Mr. Dorchen with a phone call rather than at the city council meeting. I also think that if you, gentlemen, read some of these, some of these annexations are needed to get part of Spresser Street that goes all the way out to Route 48, which we've already taken jurisdictional transfer of, and it's been repaved and everything like that, and we don't own part of it. So some of these annexations are needed already. As far as the rest of the comments, Alderman Dorchen has said that these were ones that have already been looked at, pursued, and told to go ahead of. So if you're voting against something that you've already voted for without doing your homework, then I really think that you should go ahead and vote these through. Now, from here on out, these have already been okayed, that these properties were going to be annexed. We need to go ahead. We've already spent the money for the legal work and the engineering, and those are in tonight's bills. And as I was looking at the bills, the first one I saw was Green and Bradford's for all of this engineering. So I think that we should go ahead and do this and then take Alderman Voda's comments into consideration with any further annexations. Like I said, these are all properties that are already being served by the city of Taterville, so that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Let's go for roll call.
Martin Voda.
No.
Earl Walters.
You're taking these one at a time, Your Honor?
Yes.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
No.
And the mayor votes?
And the mayor votes.
Yes, so this one passes seven to two. All right, before we go further, I believe we have some promotions in the fire department, and it's time for them to take the oath of office. So I'd ask the city clerk to please step forward and administer that oath.
Do you solemnly swear that you support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of fire chief according to the best of your ability? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the assistant fire chief according to the best of your ability?
I will.
A little deeper in the crowd. He's got the noise maker.
Nice job.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of fire captain according to the best of your ability? Thank you very much. That will be my last.
Your Honor, I think this is a fine display of support for the men who have been chosen for these positions. And I, you know, I respect firefighters and all that they do, or all of our city workers especially. But these guys really always go the extra mile to show support for their chief, their deputy chief, their captains and each other. If you were Marines, I'd say Semper Five, but I can't.
Next ordinance is annexing certain territory to the city of Taterville, this being the Guerin property, 1901 and 1905 South Spresser, also known as 2101 South Spresser.
Second.
Second, Alderman Bertle. Do we need to have more discussion? I don't think so. Roll call, please.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
No.
Martin Voda.
No.
Mayor.
Yes. Okay, motion passes seven to two. Next, an ordinance annexing certain territory to the city of Taterville, this being Peoples Bank and Trust, a banking corporation as trustee of land trust agreement number 3835, dated November 7th, 2012. The property at 2207 South Spresser, also known as 2301 South Spresser. Alderman Dorchenaz.
Second.
Second, Alderman Walters, discussion or comment? Harry, now roll call.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
No.
Martin Voda.
No.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Mayor Brotherton.
Yes, motion passes seven to two. Okay, next, an ordinance annexing certain territory to the city of Taterville, this being the Bangert property located at 1231 Northern Avenue. Salute. Second, Alderman Bertle, discussion or comment?
Comment.
Go ahead with your comment.
Question, farm property like this, what are we doing with livestock, if there's any on the properties, the grandfathered in?
Yeah, it comes in the same status it is right now in the county. Even when you bring them in the city, it maintains that.
Okay, and if they were to sell the property unimproved, does that carry it through? I'd say the family member takes over that property, transfers ownership to new family member, does it stay?
I believe, for example, if you have current livestock on there and that passes, you cannot add to it. I'll have to, is that your understanding?
Right, they can't bring anything more.
So you can't bring additional livestock, but what you've got on there stays.
That's what I need, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Alderman Walters.
For my fellow Alderman, if you look at page five, it's already zoned R1, it's not added.
Well, but if I might, I mean, Alderman Voda brought up a legitimate question on, and we're going to get to another property down here that we just might be affecting a lifestyle. Whether it's R1 is really not material until after the vote, of course, but if Mrs. Bangert still had her chickens out there, this would cause a problem.
Right.
You know?
Well, I think they used to have some chickens, a few.
She still got some?
Yeah, yeah. All right, roll call.
Bernie Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
No.
Martin Voda.
No.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Love the chicken, yes.
Mayor Brotherton.
Yes, motion passes seven to two.
I had to hold him up.
Next, an ordinance annexing certain territory to the city of Taterville, this being the Van Giesen property located at 1120 South Houston. Salute. Dorchenaz, second by Alderman Walters. Discussion or comment? Roll call.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
No.
Martin Voda.
No.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Mayor Brotherton.
Yes, motion passes seven to two. Okay, next ordinance annexing certain territory to the city of Taterville, this being the Stillwell property located at 910 South Houston. Salute. Dorchenaz.
Second.
Second, Alderman Bertle, discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
No.
Martin Voda.
No.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
No.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
No.
Martin Voda.
No.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
No.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Mayor Brotherton.
Yes, motion passes seven to two.
I had to hold him up.
Next, an ordinance annexing certain territory to the city of Taterville, this being the Van Giesen property located at 1120 South Houston. Salute. Dorchenaz, second by Alderman Walters. Discussion or comment? Roll call.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
No.
Martin Voda.
No.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
No.
Martin Voda.
No.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
No.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Mayor Brotherton.
Yes, motion passes six to three. Okay, next, we have an ordinance annexing certain territory to the city of Taterville, this being the Klinghammer property located at 900 South Shumway. Salute. Second, Alderman Bertle, discussion or comment?
I think I voted on that.
Roll call, please.
Ray Coontz.
No.
Martin Voda.
No.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
No.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
No.
Martin Voda.
No.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
No.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Abstained.
Ray Coontz.
No.
Martin Voda.
No.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
No.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
No.
Martin Voda.
No.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
No.
Martin Voda.
No.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
No.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
No.
Martin Voda.
No.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
No.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
No.
Mayor Brotherton.
For now, I'm going to say no, and I tell you, the only reason is because we treated someone else out there differently, and I don't like doing that. So motion passes five to four. Okay, next, ordinance annexing certain territory to the city of Taterville, this being the Reber property located at 1020 North Snodgrass. Salute. Alderman Dorchenaz.
Second.
Second, Alderman Walters, discussion or comment?
Comment.
Go ahead with your comment.
This is the property I mentioned, gentlemen, that, excuse me, I had the phone call about, that the person who this would be affected is somebody on a low, lower, or fixed income, however you put it, and if their taxes are raised, it's going to dramatically affect their pocketbook. So please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Other comments? Roll call, please.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
No.
Martin Voda.
No.
Mayor Brotherton.
Yes, motion passes seven to two. Next, we have an ordinance annexing certain territory to the city of Taterville, this being the Phillips property, 1128 North Snodgrass. Salute. Alderman Dorchenaz, second by Alderman Bertle.
Second with a comment.
Go ahead with your comment.
I'm getting this snake in suspicion, the way we're voting here, that we're voting based on personal conversations, or I don't necessarily like that, I know I can't control that, but when it comes to voting on annexations, I'm not doing it because I know somebody or because I want to take care of somebody or something like that. I'm voting because I feel like that these properties are in the city limits now, and this is the proper thing that needs to be done. Now, when we get outside this, what I call the city limits, then I may have a different opinion as far as bringing properties in, but I'm not doing it on person.
Other comments? Alderman Jones.
This is one of those times where sometimes a deep personal relationship with someone, it is best to abstain, so if someone has a problem with that, you know, then they can always abstain, which I will on this one.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Abstained.
Ray Coontz.
No.
Martin Voda.
No.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Mayor Brotherton.
Yes, so we've got six yes, two against, and one abstention.
Comment? Your Honor, a comment, the abstention goes with the majority vote, so that abstention counts as a positive vote.
Seven to the.
I realize it goes with the majority, but it's still counted as six, three, one, isn't it? Or five, three, one.
I will put it that way.
Yeah.
One abstention, yes.
Yeah, it's one abstention, although abstentions go with the majority, they still get recorded as an abstention.
Okay.
Your Honor, comment?
Alderman Voda.
I want to thank Alderman Dorchenaz for going ahead and not placing these under an umbrella motion. I think it's the wisest thing to do for all of us involved, is to have our individual votes documented on each parcel of the property. And in response to Mr. Jones's comments regarding coming to committee for discussion, these have never been brought to committee for discussion. We have been told which properties are being considered for annexation, and that's as much discussion as we have had at committee. Correct me if I'm wrong, gentlemen.
I didn't say that they came before the committee. All I said was that Alderman Dorchenaz advised us which properties were going to be annexed. That's all I said.
All right, Alderman Budd.
I voted no on one property that had I caught it in time, I would have voted yes. That would have been on this, Stillwell property at 910. Just.
Motion reconsider, I believe, Your Honor?
Well, do you reconsider, or do you just amend the vote? You tell us. I wouldn't get away with it, I'd say just amend the votes, unless, does anyone else have a change of thought?
I'll second that.
All right, let's just amend the vote then.
Parliamentary procedure and Brotherton procedure.
They're good.
They're all good.
Thank you.
All right. Great social support.
Yeah.
All right, we're done with the annexations for now.
May I take this back a little bit?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I was in error, I was supposed to have you also vote on the resolution with Clint Barlow and the two other ordinances.
Yes, yes.
Specifically to make sure the mayor votes on all these, so.
Okay. Next, we have a motion regarding a property located at 770 East Vine. I believe we may want to table that, is that correct, George? We're not ready to take action on that at this point, so.
Motion to table it, Your Honor.
Alderman Walters, second by Alderman Jones. Roll call, please.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Next, we have a motion to accept a $700 grant from treekeepers obtained by Barbara Grabner Kearns and to approve the purchase of trees to replace those lost this past summer across from the driver's license facility in amount not to exceed $700.
I'll make that motion with a comment.
Alderman Bertle, can I get a second?
Second.
Alderman Voda, go ahead with your comment, Alderman Bertle.
The reason this motion's on the agenda was that we just found out that this grant came through to the treekeepers, and the, not only Barbara Kearns obtained a grant for us, but she obtained personnel to plant the trees, so it was a pretty good, pretty
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Next, we have a motion to accept the May twenty-fourth, two thousand and thirteen quote of forty-four hundred dollars for labor, materials, tools, and supervision to perform work at, on the mechanical door restrictor and pit ladder for the municipal building elevator to meet the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen state regulations.
I'll make that motion with a comment, your honor.
Alderman Coontz.
Second.
Second Alderman Bertle, go ahead with your comment, Alderman Coontz.
As, as you are aware, uh, during council, I believe, either last month or the month before, the city attorney wanted to put that on hold until he reviewed the, the contract, and wanted to talk to the company, and between them and the mayor and myself, iron some things out, and they're satisfied with the contract now, that's in the best interest for the city, that's why this has been delayed up to this point, and, uh, that's why we're ready to proceed now.
Thank you. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Rob Heverly.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Bernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Okay, city attorney is not with us tonight, so we'll move on to mayor updates, and, uh, I just wanna remind everyone, uh, that the Cheney Street's gonna be closed this week, uh, as we continue to do work there on the, the Park Street, uh, sewer in that area, and hopefully they can get it done this week, and, uh, we just ask the, uh, residents to please be patient, and, and many of them have been down in that area, so, ask them just a little bit longer, and maybe we can get out of their way finally. Uh, we just got back, a few of us, from this year's IML conference, uh, once again, it was interesting and educational, um, there's gonna be some major changes in the way municipalities are forced to do business, and, and a lot of those will be implemented over the next couple of years, so it was good to kinda get a heads up on some of that stuff, so we can start preparing ourselves a little bit. That's all I've got, unless you guys have questions?
I wonder you wanna mention about the railroad crossing?
Alderman Walters, uh, the railroad crossing on, uh...
Cherokee.
Cherokee Street, do you know how long they're gonna have that closed?
Don't know how long, I would say probably a week unless...
Four days?
Four days, yeah.
Okay, and that's why I had Cherokee and Adams, that railroad crossing there, okay. And that's, uh, we've, we've been asking for, for quite some time now, probably six months or longer, uh, to have that fixed, 'cause we have had lots of complaints there where they had, uh, replaced a rail and had not, uh, finished it by, uh, making the asphalt so it was smooth, and, uh, I've had lots of complaints of, uh, people hitting that and, and being afraid they might blow a tire, so I'll be glad to see that repaired. Let's move on to committee reports, discussions and or motions to approve, adopt, and or deny, table, and or amend, and or refer to an appropriate committee in Holborn Park, the matters regarding the following subject matters discussed at the committee level, and we'll go to Lake Airport Committee.
Uh, thank you, your honor, uh, we had a few motions come out of the Lake and Airport Committee, uh, the first of which is a motion to support the concept of the Optimus Club restroom structure at the entrance to the lake until the next phase where the city will review the plans, uh, make that in form of a motion with a comment.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Alderman Bud, go ahead with your comment, Alderman Boda.
Thank you, the only, gentlemen, understand this is just, we've accepted the thought or the possibility that this could be, become a reality, uh, we aren't accepting that this is gonna be done, we're, we're not, we're not given the approval to move forward with it, we're kinda like in the infant stages, we'd like to see what your proposal is, uh, so we're just basically accepting the fact that the concept's there, we're, we're willing to listen, so...
And, and I think that's very important, I, I think the key thing is this, is this allows the guy that brought the idea to us to go ahead with that footwork and bring it back to us, um, I know a lot of the concerns, uh, if there was gonna be a building there, the quality of it, we wanna make sure it's, it's a, a quality building, uh, that, uh, the appearance looks nice coming into the lake, uh, we made it so we don't even want it at that spot, we may look at other locations there close by that might also, uh, work as well, so we're just saying, feel free to go ahead and do your homework and bring it back to us, and we'll, we'll consider it, so... Alderman Walters.
My comment, at that particular committee meeting, I voted no, because I don't think the Optimus Club has done enough research yet on as far as the cost for water, sewer, gas, electric, and whatever else, and how they're gonna pay for it, and I think they've got the cart before the horse, so, again, this evening, I will be voting no, uh, preface that with the standpoint that I think it's possibly a good idea, but positively, I'm not in favor of that location.
Any other comments? All right, uh, I guess roll call.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
No.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
No.
Bernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heverly.
Yes.
Motion passes six to.
Thank you, gentlemen, uh, the next motion that came out of committee was to approve the bid specifications as presented for the heating, cooling, electrical, and roofing at the Lake Marina Office Building, and allow Superintendent Jackson to pursue bids for the same, make that in form of a motion.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Second Alderman Walters, discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Bernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heverly.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Uh, the next motion to come out of committee was to direct the mayor and city clerk to sign the planning, design, and special services agreement with the Crawford, Crawford, Murphy, and Teller CMT for project T A Z forty-three forty-two, to rehabilitate the north ramp area at the airport, uh, make that motion and comment.
Okay.
Second.
Second Alderman Heverly, go ahead with your comment, Alderman Boda.
We held the, uh, Lake and Airport Committee meeting out at the airport specifically for that reason, so we could look at this, uh, project, and everybody had a chance to see exactly what was, uh, being addressed with this project, uh, CMT, uh, had their engineer out there to explain and answer any questions, so just wanted that to be clear.
Okay.
My comment, your honor.
Alderman Walters.
Uh, I, I continue to make the comments at these particular meetings in regards to these long, thirty-some page contracts, that I, as a layperson on this council, read those and find all the mistakes in them, when we're paying these professionals, they should go through those contracts themselves and find the little things that I tend to find by reading it, I will support this, but I'm abhorred by the fact that they continue to not catch these things and put these through to us and cause embarrassment.
Thank you. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Bernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heverly.
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Uh, without, your honor, we'll go ahead and, uh, uh, approve the resolution related to that also.
Okay.
Make that motion, accept the resolution.
We have that motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Alderman Heverly, discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Bernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heverly.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Next motion to, uh, come out of the committee was to approve the quote of nine hundred eighty dollars from Albion Radio Communications Incorporated for the cell and removal of the NDB at the Taterville Municipal Airport, make that in form of a motion.
Okay, do a second on that?
I'll second that, your honor.
Alderman Walters, discussion or comment? Hearing that, roll call.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Bernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heverly.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
And I'll go on to the, uh...
Take it.
Have you got it? Very good. There's a, uh, there's a meeting held this evening prior to city council, uh, Lake and Airport, uh, gather, and we had one agenda item, and that was the, uh, main dam inspection. Gentlemen, I'll go ahead and read that motion, uh, motion was made by Alderman Walters, seconded by Alderman Bud, recommended to the city council to allow Green and Bradford to perform the yearly dam inspection, where cost not to exceed one thousand seven hundred dollars, motion carried forward, nothing out of committee, I'll make that in form of a motion to the city council.